...of the United States of America, to the public who understands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would this be all coming? We have a sign in sheet here if you'd like to sign in so that it's on the page that you attended. We also have a request form to address the township board in the public comment section. And I'll take these in where you were receiving.
Woodmeyer?
I think.
Klein?
Here.
Supervisor?
Here.
Treasurer?
Yeah.
And clerk? I move to approve the agenda.
Is there support? Motion second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that?
Is there anything on this agenda that kind of awaited till the normal monthly meeting?
No.
Because I mean, special meetings, I mean, that's fine. It's duty of us to do this, but I think there's nothing on here that called a special meeting.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to comment on that. Uh, the reason for this is, these are all, of course, a work in progress. You've asked that, uh, you all are informed as to what is happening, and I think that's the reason for this special meeting. We have made some adjustments to the whole thing. We need to look at those adjustments, approve them, and then they'll move on to the board. So, how else should we?
At the normal monthly meeting.
Then it carries it on for another month.
No, we have a meeting in two weeks.
We do, but then at that meeting, we have to look at the adjustments that you requested, Mr. Klein, and then it's going to have to go on to another board meeting, so.
Okay. Yeah, my understanding was that you had that.
Yeah, we did.
There was some differences on some of them, so I guess we're meeting as a board to work through some of those differences.
Okay. Just for the record, we do not get paid by the meeting. There is no extra pay. I don't care what Facebook tells you. You know, this is, it's just what we have to do. So, that just clears the air there. Because right now, I know for a fact, you guys are, there's a bunch of people that believe we get paid by the meeting. That's not true, and if that ever came to it, I wouldn't accept it.
Okay, any more discussion on the minutes?
No, no, this is in minutes, this is the agenda.
The agenda. I'm scared, sorry. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Free motion.
Passed.
No, I have to say two things before we go any farther. One is, my hearing aid disintegrated. So, if I ask you to repeat something, that's the reason. I can get it fixed tomorrow, but for today, that doesn't mean I'm good. So, then the other thing I want to say is, when it comes to these water ordinances and park ordinances and so on, I'm not, I'm not going to move to, I mean, I'm going to vote, of course, but I'm not going to move to accept any of them. And I might second something, but I'm not going to move to accept any of them. And in each of them, you'll see something in red. And these things in red are things that when Rick and I met, we changed a few things. Uh, but these things in red are things that we couldn't agree on. So, when you make your motion, you're going to have to make your motion to delete those things. The first one in the water ordinance is on page six. I think that's the only one in the water ordinance. Anyway, when you, when you make your motion, you're going to have to move to either delete those things or leave them in. Uh, because that was not something we could agree on. So, basically, that's all I want to say. So, when you say, would you repeat that, please, you'll know why.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay, I move we approve the minutes of October 25th.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve the minutes. October 25th. There they are. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Okay, water ordinance, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
With or without the red part?
With.
Oh, my.
With the red part.
I will second that.
Okay, motion second to adopt the ordinance as written. Are there still things in here that need to be addressed?
Yep, I agree.
Uh, Article 10, the first line of Article 10. Yeah, it'll page 11. Uh, section one. This is going to replace any current versions of a water ordinance that we have, but it replaces all the amendments and all the other documentation too. So, we no longer would have a fee schedule if we adopt this the way it's wrote. So, how do we charge people for water if this is replacing everything we have on file for water?
Okay, so are you suggesting we, uh?
I'm suggesting that this still needs a really good thorough going through.
Right.
Because I find something different every time I go through it.
Well, that's why we're here.
Um, I still don't like.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Do you think you want to add the fee schedule to this ordinance?
Yeah, I think it should be incorporated within it.
Okay.
Except it.
And on page six, the one that's highlighted in, uh, red, I still don't think that people paying for their own water need to have permission to give it away to whoever they want. This, I can understand if the intent is for somebody to be able to give away water before it hits their meter, but nobody has that access. So, it either needs to be rewrote or it needs to be deleted.
Mrs. Woodmeyer? We have a amendment to her motion that says that the water ordinance will be accepted, including the red part and incorporating the fee schedule. Since you second it, will you accept that?
Yes, I will.
Any more talk?
Well, yeah, we're on page six, on the red. There we go. I can hear you. Well, Rick's, Rick's, uh, statement was that the water, if somebody gives somebody a glass of water, they should be able to. And I have to agree with him on that. But, you know, it is, that's obvious, but I believe the intent was to not run in line from one property to the next property after a single meter. So, is there a way, I mean, is that?
Well, if that's the intent of it, what's it change? It's still paying, the people are still paying for the water that they're supplying. I mean, if I bought the adjacent property to mine, and I took the garden hose from my current residence, and I went over there and watered the grass, as long as I'm paying for that water, it's still mine. I shouldn't have to ask you permission to do that.
Correct.
But it's your property, right?
What's that?
It would be your property.
Well, what if it's my neighbor and his well went dry, and I'm going to supply him water until he gets his well fixed? As long as I'm paying for my water, how can you guys stop me?
Bingo.
If there's an issue with the water well, then they should be here at the township telling us, so something could be done about it.
Yeah, but I mean, by the time you're talking repairs and everything else, if I drag the hose over there.
That would be special, that would be granted.
Well, let's put language in there that says there can be no other stuff connected to the single residence.
Bingo.
And I don't think Mary Jo, who's the water clerk now, or any future water clerk, is ever going to deny such a request. That would be, uh, well, that would be very dishonorable of them and.
The only, the only, the only reason I can see being in there is should anything happen to me, we have to immediately tell everybody, you need to boil your water because there's something wrong with the water, and we don't know somebody's using the water to contact them for safety reasons itself. And that's why there's a list of consumers that we have so that we can contact them. And that's one of our responsibilities.
Right, but even in that, you're going to contact me, you're going to tell me there's a problem with water, and I'm not going to give it to my neighbor. It's, it doesn't change the fact, if it's my property because I paid for it, I'm not going to ask for permission to give it away.
The only, the only way this is an issue is when the water system, uh, is, is connected to a property that has a well. If the place is in the water system, then the water system, they should be getting that water anyway. So, if there's something wrong with the water system, it should get fixed quickly. If it's pumping water outside the water system, uh, then they shouldn't be able to do that. That's just my opinion.
Well, in the case that I'm in right now, I've got a guy that lives in Avery. Comes and fills up water jugs every day at my house until he can get his well repaired. So, I need to come in here and I have to ask you permission for something I'm paying for. I don't ask you permission to live in my house. I don't ask you permission to drive my car or ride my Harley. They're my property. I can do whatever I want with them.
Exactly, our discussion.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm.
Ready?
Well, there's a possibility for, for an adjustment here. Instead of shall not supply, uh, can we put shall not connect? Because I'm, I'm concerned about hard connections. I don't care about giving somebody.
Take supply out and put in connect? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I think that would more suit what we're trying to do.
Uh, you accept that amendment?
Okay.
I have one more comment on all of this. I was looking at this also as the board has to be concerned about the health, self, safety, and welfare of all of the citizens. What if unknowingly Rick had a problem with his house that he didn't know about? He's supplying water to whomever.
Then that's my liability, not the township's.
It is, but I.
So, why would the township concerned about that?
Because the duty of the township is to take care of the health, safety, and welfare of all of the citizens. And I think that's exactly what we're doing here in saying that. I, I agree.
And it needs to be defined out like that. You can't have a broad statement like that.
That's why we're here.
Right.
When I said that.
I think as far as water ordinance, we need another work session, don't we?
That's what this is.
That's what. That's, that's why we're here.
My problem is, is every time I go through it, I pick up something different. You can read it three times and come away with three different answers. There's not a whole lot of real good definition of some of the items on it.
Yeah, I think mostly it's connectivity. I mean, people are going to have all sorts of guests, and they'll have that, everybody's going to be drinking water.
So, does the whole board understand that it's been moved that the water ordinance be adopted? Then the red part be left, and with the supply, with the, with the exception of supply, shall not connect. And the second part that's been amended is to add the water schedule. So, that's, that's how it sits right now.
How can somebody outside of Brightley Township have access to the city water? Well, in, uh, section three, if you look on page seven, the owner of property located outside the township limits may connect to the water work system. How are they going to connect to it, I mean, outside of, he's filling up a jug in the park, I guess. Our water system doesn't expand outside of our township.
I think that's.
Not at this time. If somebody wanted to quit a industrial town. Can't approve the whole township. Over by the airport, and they wanted to connect in our system, uh, we just want to make sure that it's.
Avery's off a coast of the water system, they could, some of those people could ask to come on sometime.
Or need to.
Ready? Water system, cross the. You ready?
Does it have the capacity?
I'm ready to vote.
I'm waiting for everybody to.
Woodmeyer? Klein?
No, we need more work on this.
Supervisor? Well, let's pass it to have something, and we'll see if you need to work on it.
No, I don't think so.
Well, we're going to need to review it at least annually. So, yes, I said yes. Clerk? We need to have something on it. Treasurer?
Yeah.
With the, with the changes. Those were the only ones, correct?
No, there's more. That's the whole thing. We need to have more time to work on this before we go adopting it.
Where's the water clerk, and what do they do?
But isn't it also that we go back and leave and amend it and?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
So, it's just something, so we have something in place. We can amend it anytime and any portion of it can be brought to the board.
I'd agree with you if we didn't already have something in place.
Right.
If we were talking about a, a first time go at this, I'd agree with you, but we have.
If you guys adopt this without the fee schedule, then how are you going to charge the people?
Well, we have, we have a water ordinance in place that started in eighty-three, and it's been amended all the way up to twenty fifteen. And this is going to replace all of that, right? So, we already had something in play. We could have worked on this a little bit more before we adopted it.
Can we, can we have a updated copy for our next board meeting?
I agree, why not do it right?
Can we have an updated copy with all of those changes for our next board meeting?
Absolutely, that'll, that'll be in the next few days. Okay, I want to call everybody's attention again to the park ordinance is next, and there's red things in here. So, you're going to have to read those, and you're going to have to determine if you want them in there or not when you make your motion.
Okay. I'm assuming all of the black, when you guys met.
Yeah, all the black we agreed on. The red is the only thing that we had a problem with. And as you can see, there's more red in this than there was in the water ordinance. But it's important that you read that red, so.
Okay, do I take it one at a time? To discuss it?
Are we going to have a discussion, or is somebody going to make a motion?
All right.
Because I'd have no problem having a discussion, but that's going to leave room that this won't be adopted.
Open it up for discussion.
Freeman, Freeman makes the motion.
I'll support it. Let's, let's discuss it.
Okay. Uh, I don't have a problem with the first page, the second page, item, uh, one. Not being able to have a bonfire in the park. I, I really think we're missing an opportunity. It was a lot of fun, and you get, the way this is wrote, right? No fires in the park. There's three grills down in the park, so are people not allowed to use the grills now? Because they're going to start a fire in those grills to cook their food. This says, you're never allowed to be fighters in the park, period.
I asked for that to be changed, but I did it just personally, so.
I, I think the whole section one should just disappear. You know, if we have a chance at community events, and they're safe and everything like that, I think we should be endorsing it rather than denying it. And I withdraw my objection to four C. After thinking about it, you know, this statement about being able to sell stuff in the park. It, it does have to be supervised in some fashion if somebody wants to sell stuff down there. I don't think we have to get crazy about that, but I shouldn't be able to go set up a stack of used tires and sell them down there. So, I do agree that, um, you should have some kind of permission from the township for that. But if a kid ever goes and sets up a bake sale and they're selling cookies, I'd really hope that, you know, they're not going to get a thousand dollar fine just because they didn't have permission first.
That's the only page with red on it.
Yeah.
I want to go back to number one. Uh, would it read better if it said ground fires? Because what was done in the park was raised, and it didn't damage any tree roots. It didn't damage the lawn. It was complete, completely removed and ready for public use after whatever the event was or whatever that was. And that covers the, uh, the grills as long as it's not, because if we allow fires, I mean, anybody's going to go down anyplace and just start a fire. So, I'd rather have something in place to say at least no ground fires to where it's got to be in a contained area. You guys had it in a contained.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, but to just completely hundred percent disallow it, I do have a problem with that.
Okay.
So, my question is, for the hayride or the, the haunted trail ride, you, we can't have a fire there then because it'll be on the ground?
That's where the bonfire should be, on the recreational.
That's exactly where, so we're dealing with hypothermia for these children waiting to go for their next ride.
With your permission, can I address that?
See, I think.
Sure. Okay. So, the way this is wrote, it does allow for, um, a bonfire at the rec area. What this is disallowing is having a community bonfire in the park right here. So, rec area is completely different as far as how this is wrote. I'm just trying to protect the, the park side of this, the Brightley Park, because we had a community event there, there wasn't any negativity, nothing bad happened, there was no liability involved. We had a, a nice constructed fire pit that was safe. And I think the reason this park ordinance is getting rewrote is to disallow anything healthy for the community.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, at the day use, allow bonfires. They have their grills there, but do they allow bonfires at Clear Lake now?
Only in designated areas.
Camp fires.
Does, that's at the campground, I'm talking the day use area. Does Avery at their, at their park allow? They don't even have, um, grills as far as I know at Avery Park out here. They've got one.
Yeah, I don't know what they're. I, I'm just concerned that without any kind of guidance, anybody can construct any size fire pit anywhere in the park.
Why do you have a park attendant there? Here's, here's.
Excuse me, I have a concern about fires and the fire. I do have a concern.
This is not a public hearing.
Fine, then build a fire, let it catch, um, the woods on fire and catch the buildings around town. Just because it hasn't happened before, won't mean it doesn't, won't happen, won't happen in the future.
This is permissible with everybody. I changed one A to say, start a ground fire in any place or area other than the one constructed fire pit in Brightley Township.
It's not a public, but it's our.
Recreation area at the end of Pettinger Road or in park grills. And then where it says fires are never allowed in any Brightley Township park, I put except in grills. How, does, does that meet with approval of people?
I would just put ground fires. I wouldn't even mention the grills.
Ground fires.
You wouldn't even mention the grills?
No, just the ground fire. Just basically, if you're going to be starting a fire on the ground, you're burning the lawn, you're burning the roots.
Why don't we put rings, fire rings in this designated area?
I'm sorry, we're trying to have a board.
I'm not. In the designated.
No, it's not a workshop.
Can you take that earlier?
You called it a workshop, and now it's not? Of course.
Oh, start, start a ground fire in any place or area other than the one constructed fire pit in the Brightley Township rec area at the end of Pettinger Road.
It's supposed to be heated until it's full of.
Okay, that's how I have it now.
I would just make sure that it's ground fires, only because you're going to have burn holes everywhere. I mean, it takes years for weeds to grow up. If it's raised, if it's not damaging the park and if you remove afterwards like you guys did, it's absolutely wonderful. I don't see a problem with that.
You said it was burning in the knee.
I know it's a little extra work, but we're just looking for the next person.
As I just read it, do you accept the amendment? You seconded it?
I, yes.
Okay.
If those are the only two things, well, Rick, you next C, which was two entries. I mean, do you agree with the ground fires other than the one over there?
Well, I agree with, with ground fires.
It's ground fires.
You know, but if we're going to still allow bonfires down there, that's fine. But, you know, if you look under number three, you know, township personnel have the authority to regulate the activities. We have a park attendant. If somebody comes in, they're going to rent the park like we did, and they're, they're going to want to do a bonfire or whatever the case is. We can have the park attendant take a look and make sure that it meets with whatever the requirements are. Hear that, or maybe the township should put in maybe a nice way to have a bonfire down there.
That's a possibility. It's not there now, though. Uh, if you want to work on that, that's great.
Woodmeyer?
Yes.
If there's a spot that we can.
Klein?
The downtown park was never a bonfire party park.
Supervisor?
Yes.
Clerk? Yes. Treasurer?
The ordinance adopted, that was easy. Okay, park collaborative agreement. Okay. I heard, I heard your argument on this, and I kind of agree with you. Uh, and I think we. The only thing is, uh, these, these areas are, I, I granted that when the park is being used or rented, that somebody's paying for the use of it. Uh, but the township residents do maintain it and make sure that it's available even for rent. So, I think the public that has invested interest in whatever space it is is already paying for it through their taxes, and that's the general public, and that's everybody. Uh, I was just trying to acknowledge the fact that people are paying for that space for other entities to use, whether they be for profit, non-profit, for a birthday. But all of the public actually pays to maintain that space while they're not using it so that it's available to them.
So, you have the statement say thank you to the Brightley residents rather than sponsored and part by the Brightley residents?
Great, that was my own, I don't have a problem with sponsoring.
I think this, outside of that, I mean, that's one section in red. I still don't think we need a list of names of the, and addresses for the vendors. And I think the fee schedule on here doesn't work. I can't see spending over five hundred bucks to have Vet Fest in the park, or over five hundred bucks to have Elk Fest when it's never been that high.
Okay, did you guys not go over the fee schedules, uh, when you guys met?
No.
I don't, I don't think we have a motion either way on this yet.
No.
Look up. If you max out all the services, like, if I remember right, it comes out to five hundred and ninety dollars. No organization is strong enough to support that. Not when, you know, the core of your event is outside of what you have to pay to rent that. I mean, Vet Fest had entertainment costs that were almost ten thousand dollars, you know, and it was, luckily, we were able to do it. But I mean, now you're going to start raising the cost of everything else. Well, now you're going to have to start subtracting things from your event just to cover the rent of the park.
Okay. I, I'd like to, well, even though we're not. I, I'd like to table this with the following verbiage. The reason that we have to work on this some more is because. ethically, we're supposed to charge everybody the same for the same items. Um we were actually charging single people more than these fees. I asked to have them reduced so that everybody could be charged the same for the same items regardless of who you are or how much you're using so that we could break it up to where if anyone needed a piece of it, it was X amount. I don't know how else to do that to make it fair and equitable for everybody within the township, including the larger organizations that use more of the features in the park. So I'm more than willing to table this to discuss the fee schedule, but if it's doing all of this is too much for an entity to use the park, then we need to reduce the fee schedules for everybody.
Well, I agree.
How 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 would this cost people five hundred dollars? I don't understand.
If you matched out all the all the services, it comes out to five hundred and ninety dollars.
Oh, does it? If you add them all up.
Yeah. And like Elk Fest, Vet Fest, we we have to max out, you know, we need the space.
It's part of that fee to cover the electrical charge.
Yeah.
I wonder if you do a meter reading and charge them according to how much they use.
You can't sell a utility that you don't own.
Rick and I will go through these.
You're not selling, renting it.
Right.
So now I go and table this and Rick and you go through the fee schedule.
He did.
I'd agree to that.
Well, I already moved the table. If you can support that, I was waiting for your support.
No, I'm not gonna support it without without naming people to go through the fee schedule.
Well, I have I have to say that it's not just the electrical that's used for the day. Uh the Chamber used to have the old Chamber building where there was an electrical outlet on there and six of the stanchions ran off of that electrical meter. The Chamber relinquished that building and the meter to the township. The township has no use for that electrical meter or those stanchions. Uh the only people that do use it would be the Chamber during Elk Fest. So the township actually is paying twenty dollars a month even with zero usage uh going through there just for the meter itself. So that's two hundred and forty dollars a year just to have the availability.
Well, then it used for boot ramp?
What what that building's supposed to be refurbished for bathrooms down there, so we will need the meters.
We will. Uh not only need the meters, but you need.
We'll need we'll need lights and we'll need facilities in there. And that was supposed to be done long ago.
I'm just saying that there are more costs than just the cost of, because we have three meters in the park minimum. So that's three hundred and sixty dollars a year? No, two forty. Two forty for each meter.
Yeah.
So that's what seven hundred and twenty dollars just to so just to have electrical service in a park. Uh enough to to cover a big event. So I just wanna see that there are costs other than what everybody's thinking for the day. The the supplying it and making it available and yeah, making sure that it's there for everybody.
So I think the other thing we should look at too is under the reservation agreement. I missed that because it wasn't in red.
I'd be happy to sit down and work with you.
Basically, they're telling us they don't wanna.
Because it needs to be fair for everybody.
I I agree.
That's that's my only contention.
Your motion to uh.
So all in favor of table?
Rework this, table it and rework it as far as I remember did not receive a second.
I made the motion, you seconded it.
No, I didn't. My my motion was that you and Rick, we table it because you and Rick would work on it.
Oh, all right, I'll second that then.
Okay.
You can elaborate it out. That's fine. I'll buy you better. Okay, all in favor of tabling the uh collaboration agreement for the park multi-day events?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Great. That's tabled. All right, change the zoning administrator flight officer title to ordinance enforcement officer, including site plans and ordinance enforcement officer job description.
I don't have that.
I don't either.
No, I don't have the job description in there because I thought it needed more work. So uh I uh I left that out. I just left in the ordinance enforcement officer change. I think I should bring up the enforcement officer job description later, and the reason I think that is because I think we have one and I don't think the one that we worked on and the old one were coordinated. I know I didn't do it unless somebody else did, so I think they need to be both looked at and I think they both need to be run over by both Dave and Don to to be sure we have them right. So that's my, that's why I didn't put it in there.
So I'll make a motion that we table that until we have the information in front of us.
I'll second that.
Yeah, that part, but uh but this is really two things. Somebody make a motion to change the.
I'll I'll amend my motion to table the whole item number four of the agenda.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, why, we can make another ordinance job description and title then. We'll go through them. We'll do it all at once.
Okay.
Oh, all in favor of tabling number four, changing the administrator flight officer title to.
Oh, who's gonna work on this?
I'll work with you. I got you.
How about you and Mary Jo?
I'd work with anybody sitting here.
You wanna work on this, Mary Jo, or not?
I don't have any experience.
Okay, okay, we'll do it.
Come on with the minute.
We we uh.
You just said that with David, Danny's input asked for it.
What?
You said with David, Danny's input asked for it.
Yeah, I think James.
Okay, yeah, they need to.
Okay, all in favor of tabling number four? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Table number four. Move on to number five, airport appointment.
I move we appoint trustee Whitmire to the airport board.
Is there support?
A second.
Motion second for trustee Whitmire's appointment to the airport board. Any discussion? Take hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Number six, layoffs.
Well, we have a really serious problem. And we're gonna have to start working on it soon. I think I told you all it last time that the governor cut ten percent of our budget, bang, just like that with no notice or anything. And she did that by vetoing our swamp tax, which is just a touch over thirty-two thousand dollars. So that means we have to find ways to save money. And so this layoff is uh I move that we that we lay off the park attendant for the winter.
A second.
If the concern is. Motion in a second to lay off the park attendant for the winter.
If the concern is saving money, why doesn't the board put their pay back down to twelve-six?
Yes.
And actually trustees should take a cut in pay also. I think the board's grossly overpaid and honestly, the park attendant does more work than anybody sitting in these chairs at this table. So before we lose him, we might wanna start cutting the fat right here at this table.
What's his monthly wage?
Excuse me?
What's his monthly wage?
Fifteen-six.
Now, for the park attendant, you mean?
Yeah.
I'd have to refer to a park attendant.
Is that a direct question?
Yeah.
Between between two and three hundred dollars a month.
A month?
So it's only nearly thirty thousand with Whitmire fat.
No, we're on topic. He said save money and I'm showing you guys how to save money. We could cut deputies out of work and office hours at fifteen bucks an hour. That'll save some money.
We're gonna have to save more money. This is the very beginning.
If the idea is saving money, then I think we should start.
And the November meeting, you know, the next November meeting, I'm sure there'll be some more things to think about for saving money. And after that, there'll be more because we have to find thirty-two thousand dollars someplace and this sure isn't gonna make up thirty-two thousand dollars.
Well, neither is three hundred bucks a month. I'd rather have a park attendant that's doing his job, doing good stuff for Brightley.
Or bringing activities to the children.
Absolutely.
And spending his own money. I don't think any of you guys see that.
He traditionally is not employed.
I'm gonna say, we're kinda here and quit spending money on.
No.
Even when he had the other one, it wasn't, he wasn't here in the winter.
Yeah, but we've been arguing that we're wanting to keep the pavilion open longer this year too. So who's gonna supervise that? Who's gonna do what has to be done if anybody is gonna use the pavilion?
But I haven't heard of anything, anybody coming forward with any events to do that.
Well, we've been we've been working on one. We were talking about doing a Christmas movie event right in the pavilion. We could have hot chocolate and candy and cookies and do play classic Christmas movies and hopefully turn it into the next unity event for town.
You know that you have to go and contact them, people to get the rights for that right, and you know that it's like fifty-two thousand dollars.
Already working on it.
Not not uh another thing about this is.
Yeah, we have snow drift.
If we want to, at the snow drift rally or something else, there's no problem with calling our park attendant back if he's available. We don't have, he doesn't have to be laid off for the whole winter and he doesn't have to be laid off to some specific time. Like, for example, he doesn't have to be laid off till May first, for example. If we want him to come back sooner, that's good. If we if we have a use for him, that's good too. But last winter, basically, his job was cleaning the office and it's and uh and in order to save a little money, we should clean the office ourselves.
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah.
So that means he basically wouldn't have any job in the winter except if we needed him in specific cases.
Thank you, Jay, for what you've done.
Oh, no problem.
I'm sorry, there's no protection there for you.
I knew it was coming.
You've done a really good job, lots of compliments. Everybody loved everything. You did a really good job.
Okay, thank you.
So you're getting laid on.
Yeah, well, there's more that we could do for the kids.
I'm waiting for more discussion.
I don't have any more discussion.
More discussion. Okay. There's no more discussion. Uh all in favor?
But I'm actually one of them.
And I, we could.
No.
Could you vote, Mary Jo? We had skating there before they clutched it. I brought it from the can, we get wood, can, and we just made the heat for the.
Okay, motion passed. I wish I wish we had unlimited funds and I.
We do a lot more than kids.
Okay. Number seven, it's no problem.
Well, this is another way to save a couple dollars and that's uh just not stop plowing the sidewalks on M thirty-two. We'll just save very much, but a little bit, so I'll make a motion we do that.
That we stop snow plowing?
On sidewalks on M thirty-two. Most places don't plow their sidewalks. Most most municipalities don't plow them. But here again, this is uh this is the governor's doing. This has got anything to do with what we wanna do. This has got to do with what we have to do to get thirty-two thousand dollars. And if she and if she lets that come back, then we can then we can, you know, cancel some of these. But we have to find more and more and more. One I'm thinking about for next meeting that I'm gonna work on is if we can shut off some of the streetlights. Uh I don't know. I don't know if we can do that. If we have some that
We have it ready.
We can delete or not, but that's what I'm gonna look at for.
How much money do you have in the extra money account?
For another way to save a little bit of money. And we're gonna have to keep doing that until we know we're getting our thirty-two thousand dollars back or until our milli just passes, one or the other.
Do you have support for this motion yet? Is there support for his motion yet for no snow plowing? I'm gonna support your motion just for the sake of our argument because I want this discussion. When I went to the MTA uh conference in April, I brought back a lot of stuff, a lot of resources that MTA put out there. And one of them was creating a special assessment district. I completely agree saving money and I think we can save money by getting rid of snow plowing. But if you get rid of that, now anybody that drives through here are gonna see a bunch of crap up sidewalks and it's gonna look like hell. Why not create a special assessment district for that stretch? And people pay accordingly, something fair for that service.
I agree with that a hundred percent, but we don't have one right now. And we're not gonna have one before this before the snow plowing starts.
Why?
And isn't that the plan?
I brought back the resource. It's already there.
Yeah, but it's the planning commission's job, isn't it, Bruno?
Yes, to create a district.
Okay, and I'm on the planning commission.
Yeah, so bring it right up and put it through as fast as possible. I mean, I agree with that a hundred percent, but right now, it's right now.
Planning commission can't pass any special assessment.
No.
They can define the district.
We have to have a district.
They wanna be real hard.
It's it's all that's being serviced, basically. It's just like the dam assessments. I I get charged because my water level's maintained further upstream where it doesn't go up and down because of the dam. They don't pay, but everybody that's that's.
Well, my problem is wintertime, I mean, has a potential to be busy between snowmobiling and hunting and ice fishing and all this stuff people come here for. And if left up to the people on Main Street, you know, they don't have the equipment. They don't even have the time. They've got businesses to run. If I was on Main Street with my car shop, I would much rather pay somebody to shovel the sidewalk than me get out there and have to do it. So just to cancel the service, I think is a mistake. We defined a district. We uh put out a special assessment and I'm sure if it's fair enough, nobody's gonna have an argument to it.
Did beat by the foot, I'm sure.
You have enough children that live close enough to town. Why couldn't you hire children to go do that type of thing?
The liability side of that, I think.
Well, what's the liability of not taking care of the sidewalks?
Yeah, well, that's another aspect of it too.
No other city does. Elpina doesn't.
Elpina's a lot bigger than we are. We're little.
There's an idea.
In Elpina, if you don't shovel your sidewalk on Main Street, they will send somebody and send you a.
Right, but you have to have a an assessment district in order to do that, to enforce that.
It's a cycle.
Right. If you go in that folder I brought back from MTA, this is already done and handled. It's a blanket uh assessment for doing this. Did anybody actually look through the information I brought back?
I did, but that's a while back, you know. I would and I think uh I think that's a good thing for somebody to work on, but before the planning commission as soon as humanly possible. Cause you know, I I don't disagree with that at all.
Hello?
But right now is right now. We can.
Is there, okay, you made you guys made a motion in a second to.
Cancel snow plowing.
So we're gonna have to vote on that.
Go ahead. Vote on it.
You need to find a different way.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Just a minute. Those opposed?
No.
No.
Are we, I'm confused over here because I didn't hear you talk of planning commission. Is this to send it to planning commission?
No, this is to.
Cancel snow plowing.
Con- this is to cancel snow plowing.
For now and then send it to, are you gonna send it?
No, there is no for now. They're cancel snow plowing. From this moment on.
And send it to the planning commission.
There is no sending. That wasn't in the motion. Okay, whatever will happen, because I mean, Rip's gonna do it.
Oh, I mean, that's what they want.
Sorry, what was your vote? I don't think she's, I don't think she's decided.
We haven't decided.
Whitmire? Yep, you can do it that way.
Is there any chance the amendment could be or the motion could be? Is there any chance the amendment could be, or the motion could be amended to include sending it to the planning commission?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
I'm not gonna support that.
I'm not gonna support that either, I would like to split.
Every time the board finds something they can't agree on, they send it to the planning commission. The planning commission is not where motions go to die.
I'd like to make a motion after that, but I'd like this motion to be voted on. This is, the motion is to discontinue snow plowing.
And send it to the planning commission.
That's what they do on thirty-two.
That's not what the motion is.
What about all the other sidewalks that they have to spend time on?
Thirty-two snow plowing.
I'm saying.
Now the motion says stop plowing M thirty-two sidewalks and send the issue of a sidewalk issue.
No, I'm not gonna support that.
It's just, it's two separate ones.
Two separate actions. That's, that's two kind of plugs.
So this one right now is just stop snow plowing on M thirty-two.
We should table it still spring.
Okay, let, let's have a little ball move, please.
Okay.
Now, everybody's understanding that we're just gonna... Absolutely no snow plowing, like, obviously we're gonna plow around and stuff here.
No? Nope, no. No.
No.
Okay, Whitmire?
It's not the thirty-two corner.
This is a tough one.
It's what we get paid the big dollars for.
I'm gonna have to vote no, I don't think we have this all worked out.
Kay Klein?
No.
Supervisor?
No.
No.
Okay, and Comber, no?
Okay, motion failed. If Rick wants to make a motion to create a district... I can commence that, I'll support it.
What kind of motion?
We would be adopting the district, the planning commission can help us create it, cause they'll have to help identify the boundaries and persons and all that. It's possible, it may, uh, may be possible, but the planning commission may not have anything to do with it. I think we need to call MTA and find out, and, and our lawyer to find out how to create a special assessment.
It's in the folder I brought back.
To create?
Yeah.
Does it have to be planning commission?
No.
Okay. Well, then, if you want to create one, then you can make a motion and I'll support it.
Well, you and me already have stuff to work on, so why don't we just roll this right into it?
That, that's fine.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion that with your help, we're gonna work on this together.
Absolutely.
And then we'll bring it back in front of the board at a regular monthly meeting. Doesn't have to be a special or anything like that.
Correct. Okay, I'll support that.
What's the motion?
What's the mo, the motion is Rick and I are going to, uh... Move that Rick and I look into and, uh, creating a special assessment district for plowing and shoveling sidewalks.
I do see one benefit.
And other end.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just got to bring this up. I do see one benefit in doing this, though. If we don't have anything that we have to plow downtown, right? Then there no longer be a need for Eric to take the truck home with him at night. I do see one benefit of this whole thing. Well, I, I mean, we're trying to cut that, right? So fifteen miles out to the ranch with a one-ton Ford is not...
Why, why are we doing it now?
Excuse me?
Why are we doing that now?
So he can be here early enough to get the sidewalks cleaned. Like last Friday, the truck went home to the ranch. I don't know why.
He doesn't have a car?
Yeah, it's his responsibility to go back forth to work. I have to get family.
Oh, it's Bryleys, it's Bryleys.
Oh, okay. But we're spending the money on that, that, that's stupid.
Is this an open workshop?
Can you tell me if I have this right, okay? The motion is for Rick and Bruno to work on developing a special...
Friday, his van stayed here overnight and the truck wasn't here. The cover, the windows are covered up on that end of the building for a reason. That door gets barred for a reason, and I'm guessing that's probably the reason. I've asked you to look into this before and everybody tells me, no, it's okay, it's okay. Well, it's not okay. That's, I do maintenance on vehicles every day of my life, and I'm telling you, I know what a plow hanging off the front end of a truck does. And that, I don't like the fact my tax dollars are going to that, to that. I, I have to supply my own vehicle, you have to supply your own.
We have a motion that we're willing to...
Yeah, let me make this motion and tell, and tell me if it's what you want. Motion for Rick and Bruno to work on developing a special assessment district for sidewalks. Is that the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and I made the motion. Okay? And you seconded it, right?
So we're gonna lay off somebody for three hundred dollars for that?
And should it be a roll call or should it be a, uh...
No, it doesn't matter. All those in favor, not spending any money.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I need to go back to the truck thing that you mentioned, although it's not on, because you mentioned it publicly. I, I did follow up on that and I have contradictory statements. I need to know what proof you have, that he took the truck home on Friday.
The truck wasn't here and his van was.
How do you know?
Because I came here Friday.
What time?
About two o'clock. I forgot the office was closed.
They work on Friday.
They work on self-workday.
Did you check the cemetery or the park or anyplace?
It was, his van stayed here overnight, Friday. I came here at two o'clock, his van was here, they weren't here, right?
Friday.
Yep.
Did it come back Saturday?
Why don't we track my life?
It was still sitting there Saturday. His van was still sitting there. Do they work Saturdays also?
If they were plowing.
Okay, well, they're not gonna be plowing anymore, so...
Really?
So we get some assessment district defined.
Other than... All right, other than his truck was here on Saturday, well, I'll, I'll look at his time clock. But if they came in to plow, he would've had to have come in and...
What were they gonna plow on Saturday?
I don't know.
Okay, that's my argument here. And I think we need to really look into the fact that that door not be barred like that anymore, because that's against fire code. And the windows be uncovered, so that if somebody walking past wants to look in at the Bryley truck, they can do it. There's absolutely no reason the windows need to be covered.
I have personal knowledge that the reason they did that was because someone, one of the husbands of this board was spying and stalking them. And they didn't wanna be watched while they're eating and taking their break, as if they weren't entitled. This happened a while back, but it did happen.
Well, then they had to handle that with a harassment restraining order.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We have the twenty-twenty meeting scheduled, yep, on the agenda, yep. Okay, I'm gonna wait out there.
I second.
Is it regular meetings?
Yeah. I think we should change the meeting time from four-thirty to six o'clock. I'd like it to even be later than that, but at least give people that work outside of the community a chance to get back here for a meeting.
That's a motion, do you have a second?
No, it wasn't a motion, it's just discussion on a motion to adopt it at four-thirty.
I didn't hear a motion in the second.
Yeah, there's a motion in the second.
I moved we adopted Freeman seconded it.
Okay. Any more discussion, that's fine. I didn't hear Freeman.
Yeah, start yelling.
Sorry. Any more early?
Yes.
Any more discussion?
I don't have any.
Do you have all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, motion passed. Three one, I'm sorry, four to one.
Four to one, okay. He's amended.
Yeah, that's a fight too. Yeah. They don't like to get up in the morning and they don't wanna work late, I don't know.
Okay, public comments, Mr. Moore?
Are there anyone there?
No.
Okay. I'd like to read into the record, the letter of September the twenty-fifth of twenty nineteen. And this is regarding Nancy Kaiser and her resignation. Mr. Roosevelt, I cannot and have not been in agreement with most of the decisions of this board. The spending is irresponsible and the environment is toxic, to say the least. My resignation is effective as of September the twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. Signed, Nancy Kaiser. This has never been read in public, even though she did resign, there was no, no better read in the public, so they had no idea what a while. Uh, with regards to what we just went through, the water ordinance that you just adopted is absolutely not ready to be signed. I've gone through this thing many, many times and I've seen nothing but problems in it. Many points and presentedness are incomplete. There are formulas in here, uh, supposed to be in here, they're not in here, there's nothing dictating what they are. Doesn't state, doesn't say it's gonna be fair, it doesn't say anything. There are written permits, there's no permit form, there's a lot of things that are not available. If you had somebody right now that came to this board and wanted to put a, a line out there, you couldn't do it, because you legally don't have written permits. You have nobody ready to go out and look at this. I don't think Eric does this, I believe this is done by the county. This is not done by the local township. They look at water lines and they take care of things. Uh, so this is a little bit out of line for the township to even get involved in. The water clerk, who's the water clerk? Is that another, another thing we have to pay for, just because you want this? A water clerk? We don't even know what position is, we don't have a job description, description, we have nothing. You've got in here one of the things is the capacity of the system, uh, on page six. I guarantee you, not one of you knows what the capacity of this system is. And if you did, it should be in this, this ish, this thing. And like Rick said, the last item on here, the, it's on here on, uh... It says it supersedes all, you can't supersede all if you don't have anything in there that should be in there, because you can't force your own agreement. Nor can you dictate to people what they can do. You've got, you have to deal with the side, uh, where the, you call that system? Where it, where it says what a building pipe and a service pipe, you've got it beginning at the owner's property line. I don't think so. Uh, it's always your line until it gets to the meter, it always has been that way, and now you're making a change. You're also stating it has to be within sixty-six feet of the property line going ahead. You wanna run the clock, Ed? Is that what you're doing?
It's past three minutes now.
You know, you had all the time. And at what point, at what point do we, as, as citizens, really have any input into what you do at this table? We don't. You're now telling us that you're gonna have, uh, snow plowing, you're gonna cease doing that. You're gonna set up a, a line of people here for an assessment schedule, you know, given zone. Call in an expert.
Wrong. He has a right to speak, he has a right to speak.
Somebody wanna, someone wanna give me an expert?
I'll give you my time.
Okay, Mary, you're very good.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. You got on here saving versus economic development. You're not doing any, your saving is not good for anybody.
He's got valid re, things to say.
It might be, but when are you gonna start asking to the public?
This is, this is...
Okay, then, give me your time and not call nine-one-one.
Call whoever you want.
Oh, really? That's abusive, nine-one-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. As I called him, my hearing aid is...
Mary, Mary gave it.
Oh, send you.
Go ahead, Phil. You, you're not saving any money by doing some of this stuff. What you instead of need to be doing is looking at economic development to raise money. That way you have more taxes coming into the area, you've got more sales tax coming into the area, more things you can do to raise money. It doesn't have to be by cutting everything that's already here. And if you wanna cut out this snow plowing and make a special assessment, and you're not giving those individuals on these roads and streets an opportunity to speak to that before you ram it down their throats because you want to, we got a problem. Because they can't speak, I can't speak, unless I come in here and get my three minutes, and it's after the fact. So we don't have any voice in this government whatsoever, done. I'm, I'm getting to the point where I'm really tired of it. I've got here, snow plowing, what are you gonna do with the elderly people that walk to the mailbox? You're not gonna plow the sidewalks so they can get there? I hope not. The lights on the street is, you wanna cut them off, what about somebody falling? Or not being seen? This, you're supposed to serve and protect, you're supposed to have safety and all, all things for the community. Visibility and, and issues on the sidewalk come into play there big time, and you trying to cut it out because? None of this makes any sense to me. You've got in there the park pavilion reservation agreement, you continue to use the word "I". I acknowledge that I will receive a key. It's not an "I", it's "we", it's an organization or an individual, "we" is a proper word, not "I". Uh, they're always doing it on behalf of more than one person. Uh, where you got in here, provide the dumpsters as needed, you've got two or more as needed. How about provide at the adequate number as needed? Makes more sense. You're, you're telling them they have to have at least two big ones, who's paying for it? If I only need a little one, why do you have to tell me I have to use two big ones? And I agree with Rick, the scheduling here is, is ridiculous. Nobody should have to pay five-hundred-and-ninety dollars as a large organization to rent that park for three days. That's what it comes up to as a maximum charge. Now, you're tucking into a lot of things, you're not supposed to be making money on the public in those issues, not. But you are, that's not right. You need to go back and read through all these pieces. Thank you. Carrie?
All right, so what I wanna make forward is, I understand it's been brought to your attention and I have been asked many times to get an ice skating rink for the kids. I even was appalled that there were actual ice skates that were donated that were later sold, because the board didn't wanna do it. Why? Why are we not giving an, an adequate place for our children to play during the winter? This is ridiculous, there is nothing for these kids, nothing. What are they gonna do, go get in drugs, go get another thing? Why? Cause you guys are all old, sorry, but you are, you don't have children, you're not worried about it. I am. And you know what, and I see the reactions and I see what happens to these kids, I pick them up, I take care of these overdoses. This is bull crap. And you know, you wanna lay him off, the one guy that wants to... No, no, before you run your mouth, I'm going to finish. You wanna lay him off, the one that spent his own money to bring a haunted trail? I just turned around and spent three hundred dollars for the next one, out of my pocket, not your guys' pocket. So you wanna lay the one person off that is an advocate for these children? And I am disappointed, really disappointed with y'all. Because you're thinking of yourselves and you're running this like it's a senior citizen community. Well, guess what, no new families are gonna come in, no new kids are gonna come in, there ain't shit for them to do. They're gonna get in trouble. You know, I'm trying to get communities together to get activities for these children, because it's, it's sad. I was here before, when my youngest or my oldest son was here, it wasn't like this. What happened to it? What happened? We're not ma, we're not bringing in businesses, we're not even trying. You go through this town and it's, it's not even nice looking, my God, you go through Gladwin, same size, it's beautiful, all the work they've done. Why aren't we doing any of that? It looks like it's a dying town, and I don't get it. And then you wanna lay somebody off who's willing to handle that ring? Charge them, charge them a year, kids, the parents will pay a yearly fee to use their, uh, ice skating rink. Why not? Let them get their energy out. You know, give us a snow hill, a hill that they can actually slide on, let's do some activities here.
Instead of having to go to Gaylord or El Pina.
It's ridiculous. Or maybe you just buy us some bots to take back and forth then, if you don't wanna put that effort in. But this is not a senior citizen place. Look at our school, our school's dying, there's no kids there, there's no activities, there's no programs to help the ones that are struggling. Because we don't have enough kids here to bring enough revenue. Look at our school, our school's dying, there's no kids there, there's no activities, there's no programs to help the ones that are struggling, because we don't have enough kids here to bring enough revenue. But you guys are not doing one damn thing to make it good for the kids in this community, not one. Go look at the fair, how many, how many participants were there, how many empty spots were there? It's ridiculous, it's embarrassing. It shouldn't be like that, cuz that's not how this place was.
Could somebody please paraphrase for me what this lady said, cuz I couldn't hear any word.
She's, she's a, she is.
Looks like a skating rink.
She's doing things for the children and she's upset that, she feels that the board is not doing that. Um, not setting the stage and, and the environment conducive to children's activities.
Is that basically, is that a true synopsis of what you said?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'm not the only parent here with the same.
I could not hear a word.
Comment.
Okay, and I appreciate everything that you said and I totally agree with it. I, I, I think if you look at this board, you're, you're seeing something that, or you're seeing something that I have not seen, because I've worked with every individual, might as add, cuz I, is, uh, I've not been involved in much, but I've worked with Mary, I've worked with Rick, I've worked with Mary Jo, online campaigns for children and different events, I know all of them. Given countless hours over the years, um, for events.
But now you're tired, you don't wanna.
No, it's not that we're tired, it's just that a board and a government is different than a civic organization. Those types of things for people are civic things, and a government should stay away from saying this is good for one group or this is good for.
Really, so we can't put a ice skating rink in, in Bryley because it's not your job, basically?
Basically, yes.
How about a community center?
Even, the community center, just like Gaylord's, is not part of their government, that is a separate entity.
It is part of their parks department. The community center in Gaylord, cuz I moved over here from Gaylord, is part of their parks department, their, uh, Seago County Parks Department.
Correct.
And their parks department.
I, I agree, do you know what the millages that they pay over in Gaylord as far as the tax millages into their?
I cannot remember right offhand.
We get, we get less than one mill.
Well, yes, cuz this is a smaller compute, community, not where Seago County as a whole is a smaller community, always has been. But even, I grew up here, and even as a child, there was nothing for us to do as children, unless you wanted to go out to Lake Fifteen and get into trouble, or go into other places and get into trouble.
Agreed.
I mean.
But as a community, we have to do it as a community, as a government entity, I mean, it's like you're, you're looking at the DNR to do something, or the state of Michigan to come in here and do something. It, I, I realize you, it's looking like a township board because you know everybody here, and we have the same rules and the same guidelines as those other government entities.
I don't know any of ya.
Read this.
I don't know any of ya.
Read it out loud.
Okay.
And I'm gonna break my own rule and I'm gonna respond to public comment.
No, you go right ahead.
Okay. You're a hundred percent right in the fact that there's nothing for kids, I have five kids, three of them are adults now, four of them are adults now. Outside of here, in the past year, I've really put the effort in campaigning for kids to do the BFW in the American Legion, but you're a hundred percent right, some of that needs to be brought as far as Bryley's concerned. So myself with Jay and other people, other volunteers, we've been trying to host unity events, we had a potluck that was a smash event, and, and my opinion was a home run. You know, like seventy people, everybody brought their A-game, the food was real good, almost died in the grass. We did bonfire, right? Little by little, we're trying to do things, but little by little, every time we hit one of those home runs, we gotta step back, you know? So we're moving, it's just, it's like quicksand, the faster you move, the worse it gets, so if you're interested, you wanna go forward with the kid stuff, and you need somebody to, to help you, by all means, get ahold of Jay, get ahold of me. Do whatever you can.
How many, how many, how many?
How many get him living when you just definitely laid him off?
I didn't, I said no.
I understand you personally didn't.
And my thing here is. Jay.
But your board did.
Jay does this stuff as Jay, I mean, he.
Jay will work outside of the township hours.
I watch, I watch this.
Exactly, exactly, if you figured out how many hours he actually put in.
You can't afford it.
He would be in the, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think what you guys are doing with laying him off is the most stupidest thing I've ever heard. Now, this lady over here tells me that there's a three thousand dollar, did you guys get a three thousand dollar raise?
Yep.
Did you?
Not that I know of, that didn't happen.
Really? No, nothing, there's nothing in writing on it.
Back at the budget?
At the budget, you didn't get a three thousand dollar raise?
You didn't get, you didn't get any raises?
No, not that I know of.
No?
Colmer didn't, okay, then maybe we need to do some investigating into that. I think we do, because you want.
Personally, I would vote for any single thing that was brought before the board that benefited kids. If we had the money. I think I told you at the beginning of the meeting that the governor just took thirty-two thousand dollars away from us.
Well, sir.
Now, if we pass our millages, we'll get that back, and then we'll be able to do, you know, more things at the park and every place else. If we don't get our millages and if the governor doesn't give us our thirty-two thousand dollars back, then we're still gonna have to keep cutting.
Well, sir, as a property owner here in Bryley Township and having children myself, I would more than well, will be willing to have my taxes raised if it's going to benefit my children. But I want that three thousand dollar raise that you guys received.
The millage is only four dollars, average, and I'm talking average, it'll be more for some people and less for others, but it's only, on an average, it's only approximately four dollars per parcel per year, so it's not very, so it's not a lot of money.
And would it guarantee that it would be something to go towards helping our children, not just my own personal children, but the children in this community?
It goes to parks.
How much ice cream we had.
It goes to parks, it's earmark for parks.
And would there be events for children, earmark?
Well, for parks, I mean, that, that, uh, that would certainly have to.
But you, you are saying, you know, is that just going to supply more playground equipment, or is that going to supply activities for the children, not just playground equipment?
Yeah, I think all we can do is supply the venue, I don't think that we, those are civic organizations.
So what grants have we written for?
Okay.
Okay, so they took money away.
One more, one more.
Hockey equipment and boom ball equipment.
And so I suppose Whitmire's fault that we had to spend thirty-two thousand dollars on software that wasn't needed, and that's thirty-two thousand dollars, oh my goodness, just what she shorted us. Move adjourn.
I guess I think we need to make the public aware through the news.
But we have, we have had a. We have had a military quest on the ballot that was.
Quarter two, quarter eleven.
How much did the ice rink, how much did the ice rink used to cost? I guess apparently you guys have one.
It was about six hundred and some dollars just to heat the pavilion through the winter.
Six hundred and some?
Yeah, six hundred and some.
I'll give you the money for that.
Cuz it, what happened was.
I'll give you the money for that.
The bathrooms.
You got, you got them on adjourn the meeting.
There was a motion to decide into adjourn?
No, I don't think there was.
It's cuz they don't like what they're hearing.
It's cuz you don't like what you're hearing, you have to walk off.
Then let's just put it in the paper, guys, let's let the whole public know, let's, let's educate.
The revs are gone, so we have adjourned the meeting.
No, you haven't.
I guess they're just tired.
Nobody, nobody voted to adjourn this.
It's been a long day.